We're gonna go ahead and get our work session to order. The first thing, Alex, do we have anybody on Supreme?
Ashton Fowler, ma'am.
Oh.
Along here.
We'll get Ashton Fowler to lead us where we get started.
Dear everyone, Father, thank you for letting us gather here today and do city business as you see fit. And I'll do those as we make the decisions we're about to make and discussions we're about to have. Grace our tongues with the words that come out. The words, "you see fit," let us carry on businesses as we should. And be this relief for your, for the rest of the week and your night of prayer.
Amen. Okay, so if you guys don't mind, I wanna kind of re-arrange the, um, the order. I wanna see if we can go ahead and get started with the audit, because I know Laura's gonna be late and I know she, um, she doesn't wanna miss number one, so.
Good.
Is that okay? You wanna go ahead and go first?
I'm ready.
That really won't hold you all in line.
All right, yeah, I gotta start again. I appreciate y'all having me here. We've completed the FY twenty-two audit of the city. There's one, let's see, one, two, three, four reports. Uh, there's a two-page, uh, highlight memo that describes kind of the important things within each of those four reports. Uh, we have the city's audited financial statements, which is the thickest packet, seventy-two pages. We have the management letter, which has comments on just some operational things that the city should consider, that we can touch on in detail if needed. We have an audit committee, or governance letter, as we call it, which essentially is a letter from us, the auditors, to management and council, describing our responsibilities, what we can test as an independent auditor, and our procedures. And also that, you know, the city management is ultimately responsible for the financial statements. And then the last thing is the single audit report, which is the smallest bound report. It's our testing of the grant programs for that fiscal year. Uh, we performed a compliance audit of two programs. Uh, based on our, we take, uh, calculations to determine which programs to test. We tested, uh, let's see here, on page. Two major programs. The coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program. We tested that fiscal year twenty-two, the expenditures, and then all the different reporting requirements. And then also the FEMA disaster grant that happened in the fall of twenty-one and then to the spring of twenty-two. We tested those two. On the financial statements, uh, the highlights memo touches on the performance of the city for that fiscal year. There's fund-level financial statements, government-wide, which is more of a full accrual that people and the citizens might be used to seeing. That had, looks more like a business format. But to hit the highlights on the financial statements, we'll briefly, as far as the fund-level financial statements that the city uses to budget on a monthly basis. For the fiscal year twenty-two, there was a net increase in, uh, fund balance of two million, one sixty-nine, eight seventy-nine, two-point-one million of overall increase, which is a good indicator, you know, of council and management's, uh, monitoring of expenditures and such. Uh, there was no debt issued in fiscal year twenty-two. That sometimes can skew the numbers, because debt proceeds or reported revenues in fund accounting. Uh, the full accrual change in net position, which might, if you wanted to call it a net profit, uh, from a business focus, where it has long-term assets and liabilities on the balance sheet, was, let's see, an increase of three-point-two million in net position. That takes into account, like, accruals and accrued leave and things like that. So everything ultimately had a positive increase in fund balance, so that's good. The financial statements, as you can see, are quite a bit of detail in them on debt, uh, the pension disclosures, uh, the retirement benefit disclosures, fixed assets, uh, all the different funds, the general fund, the special gas tax funds, senior citizens ones. There's detail within here. And this two-page highlight kind of hits where you could find the information if you wanted to look deeper into any particular, uh, fund or where expenditures occur. On the two-page management letter, which was the smallest report, we just had the, we just had the one, uh, recommendation this year, which was a decrease from the prior years. We had four, I believe it was, within the ten-cent gas tax fund. There's some annual reporting that, in that particular fiscal year, that happened. Since then, that reporting, it happens in August and January of each year for that ten-cent gas tax. Uh, that's, uh, been corrected since then. And, uh, the governance letter is essentially the one describing our responsibilities. Uh, nothing terribly, uh, important to point out for this meeting. And then the single audit report, we had, um, kind of toward the very back of that report, just some recommendations, some things about accounts payable, interplay connections, kind of not reconciling, or had to have some adjustments and such. And then in the grant reporting that I mentioned, we had some, uh, uh, reports with FEMA and also to the Department of Treasury that couldn't find the reports themselves. If you look on the website, it says the FEMA grant, they were good with everything. Expenditures qualified, they closed it out, but we couldn't find the reports that were required. So nothing too earth-shattering there. So that is it for the financial statement reports. Does anyone have any questions? We have electronic copies as well, that, uh, the city clerk's office has. PDF copies that can be sent to bond attorneys and such. And also, as you apply for grants, you can send the electronic copies that typically ask for your audit. We're hopeful on the twenty-three audit. Uh, we've already received some information for that audit, uh, from a list that we started about a month ago. And hopefully, once we get a few more things reconciled, the city clerk's office gets a few things reconciled, we can get on the FY twenty-three audit, uh, quickly. And hopefully have that, uh, finished in a more timely fashion. Any questions on, I don't know if I've had a chance to truly dig through the reports yet, but feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions. Once you look at it, any questions about any of the, uh, recommendations and such. And we can help, you know, provide some guidance on things for the city clerk's office to implement. Right, yes, there was five things essentially that require a response. And you'll see in the back of that grant compliance audit. On the city's letterhead, it's essentially your response that you're gonna take to remediate those few things. And that's all I got.
Thank you so much for that.
Absolutely.
I appreciate, appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
All right, so, I guess we'll go back, um, to number one. It's, um, city, city council discussion on budget updates and entities. So I'm saying Alex gave us all the spreadsheet. And on the spreadsheet, it only includes, um, everybody who asks for additional funding that, um, from the twenty-twenty-three budget. So, and we are gonna go line by line. And Mayor, I know, um, we have, we have your recommendation on here. We have, um, what everybody asked for, and there's also what they, um, what they got in twenty-twenty-three. So it's, um, what they got in twenty-twenty-three, the additional request, the mayor's recommendation, and...
Bring everything back to the twenty-twenty-three, original, what was agreed on for twenty-twenty-four.
So you're saying you recommend that we just, um, level fund everybody with no additional funds? And that's what you're, yeah, that's what your recommendation is?
We're not about four months away. We gotta go through this again. And this will carry us through, you know, we appreciate what we started in October, agreed to let us go up to six months, we're never going back to where they should be in the original twenty-twenty-four budget. And like I said, we have got about three, four more months, well, actually three months for us. My staff and I will be sitting down, getting ready for the twenty-twenty-five budget. And then we'll be going into this again.
Okay.
And we'll have a better sight of our revenues.
Does anybody have any questions on what the mayor is recommending?
Do I do it? Um, Mr. Mayor, the safe transportation contract, we have to increase that by thirty-two thousand, because that's our transportation program and we're obligated under a contract.
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
I'm a retail accountant.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the council was aware of that. And, um, our tele-network expense for eighty thousand. Last year, we got sixty-five thousand, this year we need eighty, because our hourly rate has gone up from one forty-five to one eighty-five an hour.
So those things, no matter what we decide, we have to, we have to do those, right?
That's correct. So I just wanna make sure you guys were aware, you guys are playing with the numbers.
Okay. All right, so with, um, taking what the mayor's recommendation is in mind, um, I suggest we just go line by line and discuss, um, what we're gonna do. And tonight, what we discuss on, tonight what we discuss and what we decide on, that's what's gonna be voted on at the next meeting in two weeks. So today is basically gonna set everything in stone. I know we left, um, we left after the last meeting, there were a few of us who were unsure, so my opinion, we just need to be responsible when spending the taxpayers' dollars. So we just need to go over this one more time, just to make sure everybody was on the same page and we could vote in good conscience.
Correct.
So, um...
So do we need to first establish, or we're gonna go over there with the mayor's recommendation, or the requested numbers, or is that line by line also?
Yeah, well, with the mayor's recommendation, he, he's saying, don't give anybody anything except the B O E. But you are, you are in favor of the Board of Education. So everybody's...
That has already been agreed upon.
Yeah, so everybody's in favor of the Board of Education getting their three-nineteen. But he's saying, don't fund anything else into October. He's not saying, don't give it to them, but he's just saying, wait till October to consider all of this. That's what he's saying.
But that means that they're...
Well, that's still an agreement that's...
They're out for the whole year.
Yeah.
Well, he's saying level fund them, level fund them based on what they got in twenty-three, but don't give any additional money. So give them what they got in twenty-three, but don't give anything extra.
He said twenty-four, for the twenty-four budget. But still, these are extra beyond that as well.
Yeah, but that, but that's what, that's what he's recommending. So that's why we're gonna go line by line, because there was, um, there was a couple of things just from talking...
The base of attention.
Yeah, just from talking to you guys on separate occasions, everybody, some of us were confused, some of us were uneasy, so we just need to go line by line.
What I'm saying is, if there's a majority that says, let's do the mayor's recommendation, then there's no need to go line by line. But like me and myself, I'm not for the mayor's recommendation, so we go line by line to see what, where we're at.
And I, and I'm, and I'm, this is, that's why we're doing this. I wanna go line by line, too, because I do think that some of these do deserve some additional fund.
Okay.
All right, Lee, you?
Yep.
All right, Mayor.
And this also takes into account what Alex said that she needed in order to be able to increase costs that have to be funded.
Okay, and we do have a number. So we do have a number of what we have right now. So, um, Alex can provide us with that number, and then we'll pull out the calculator and we'll start, um...
Calculate.
Subtracting. And the first thing she's gonna take off of that number is the B O E.
Correct. So Lee, the number's five-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars. All right, council's gonna take off three-hundred-nineteen thousand for the Board of Education. That leaves two-fifty-six.
Okay, and then in my opinion, I think the next most important things are the library and department rep. I think we need to address...
I'm sorry, we got the eighty thousand dollars for the I T.
Yeah, that's right, that's coming off, so the eighty...
That brings the balance to one-seventy-six.
And the thirty-something thousand that we have to put in...
Thirty-two, nine, fifteen.
Okay.
Let me know when you're ready, Lee.
Yep.
That should bring us to one-forty-three, zero, eighty-five. Can you check my number, please?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, so...
One-forty-three, zero, eighty-five, just now.
All right, so this is out of the ordinary. So Tracy and Steve, gonna ask you guys to come up, because I wanna ask you a question at the same time.
And the microphone does work?
Yeah, we gotta do it.
Yeah, so they, they're just, yeah, they don't even, yeah, they can touch the microphone. So the question, and the reason I ask you guys both to come up at the same time is because this would affect you guys, and we just wanna know your opinion. Nobody has decided on anything, that's why we're here. But I do have to ask, because it has been mentioned. So I know the big thing with, um, with some of us is, you know, some people don't feel that the library and park and rec are a part of the city. Or they feel that, um, you guys aren't city employees, where some of us say you are city employees, because we didn't pay the salaries for you full-time. So the question came up as to what would happen if we would absorb you guys completely? So we would absorb you guys completely, and that way, both of your departments, you basically would be department heads, and both of your departments would be included in, um, any cost of living adjustments, um, step raises, and so on and so forth. Of course, you would have to be added to the pay scale. So I wanted to know, what were your thoughts on that and why?
Do you have more history on that?
Well, I've done a lot of research in the last few weeks. Set the last council meeting about the structure of the library. And of course, the Parks and Rec is included in a lot of that. And when Mayor Parker set up the way that he did the departments, that's the way they've been. That's the way they've been all these years since nineteen-thirty-six. And the Parks and Rec and the library came in about the same time. There was a civil service exemption that was done in two thousand. That civil service exemption was done so that seasonal help could be hired, cut grass, to hire different employees for the summer, and they gave the civil service exemption. But the way that I read it was, the library and Parks and Rec were still what they were, it's just they didn't have to go through the civil service to get employees and then to let them go again at the end of the season. Our thing has always been, we use the same auditor. You can see my books, because that's been said to me, well, we don't know what y'all spend when you get it. Aaron was just here, the city has a copy of our audit. I mean, when we raised money to build a building, the city put five hundred thousand in, and we built that for the city. Everything we raised money for goes into the city's library. We don't raise money and give it other places, it goes into that library. So I guess my question is, is yes, if the life, if the employees would be treated the way the other employees are, instead of us hearing that there's meetings where they say, let's call it this, so we don't have to include those employees, which we've heard on occasion, then, then I say, let's open that conversation. I mean, I'm open to that.
Maybe still keep some of those exemptions for our part-timers in the summertime.
Perhaps, because I think it would be very cumbersome for Steve especially, you know...
Yeah, we hire probably thirty-five to forty part-time seasonal workers a year. And if we have to deal with civil service, the season would be over before we could hire them.
And we get that, so, and, and that also came up. But I still, I want, that's why I wanted to ask you guys to see, how do you feel about that? And if this is something that you think would benefit you guys and your departments?
One of the things that, that I noticed, and I shared with Steve the other day, is that civil service exemption, it said, and it was from Don Segelman was the, at the time, when they got the ruling on it. It said, please ensure that the structure of the organizations wouldn't change, because it would negatively impact some of the employees. And so that is my concern, because we do have separate accounting, separate bookkeeping. We do have all that, and that functions, because we have to be on demand for things. If I have to place an order for books today, I can't wait to come to a city council meeting and get approval for that, or we're not gonna function at the rate that we do. We have to function on demand. And so I think, I think that's a conversation we would have to have, too, is to make sure that we were still gonna have the liberty to serve the public at the rate that we do. But we would certainly be open to that. I mean, I'm not speaking for Steve.
It's the exact same thing. I mean, Nate, you called me today, and we have vandalism in one of the parks.
Right.
If we were under the city of Sulicaga, like, watch that process. The process now is, I call the head guy, he carries, he carries his car to Home Depot, he gets what he needs to take care of the problem. Now there's not profanity on the playground in the middle of a big apartment, so. The thing that I've always enjoyed about our board, I mean, y'all literally appoint the board. Like, we are city employees, because y'all appoint, I have more bosses than any other department head in. I got seven people on our board that look at every single invoice we pay every single month. We give y'all a copy of our audit, and then I'm hearing that we don't know what happens over there. Come on, me.
Well, we can't... But Steve, you, you should know firsthand, we can't go about what he, they, and she said. We, we would drive ourselves crazy if we were trying to figure out who said what. And you guys do a good job, but I mean, I still had to ask everybody to see, you know, how you guys feel on it. And, and the reason I ask is, because we have in front of us what you guys requesting. And most of the money you're requesting is for salaries. And the reason you're requesting the money for salaries is because you guys don't get included in the things that, you know, the city employees are included in. So, again, so, we're just trying to do what, we're trying to figure, come up with a way, with what, what's gonna, um, serve the city in the best way. Because even if we approved to give you guys what you're asking today, you know, there may be a long time before you get anything else.
We're used to that.
Yeah.
I've been here fifteen years, I've had like three races.
And, and going, I think, and going under, I don't mean you've had conversations about this way before tonight or two places, even when, before I even got in office. But I think going under the city would eliminate some of that, because every time city employees got a cost of living, Parks, Rec, Library comes along, would get it also. You see what I'm saying? It's really a matter, and I think Tiffany's on the same page, it's really a matter what you guys think's gonna be wrong, and how, how well it's gonna make your department still functioning.
Well, I mean, I don't wanna take a temporary fixing one problem, which is paid. I mean, it's pretty simple, y'all's appropriation has our salaries listed on there. You've only gotta add money to one line of that appropriation to fix the problem.
But we also gotta have reach.
And, and that wasn't, the issue isn't, the issue isn't...
Free is minimal for us.
One of the issues was that came up, that was mentioned to me, is that we do pay the salaries. We pay the salaries, but we don't have a say-so in how much you pay people, or how much you hire people in. Which I think, you know, I think, again, I think you guys do a good job, but that's what, that's what the issue, um, is with some people. So they say, you know, I get it, you guys wanna be treated like everybody else is treated, but you don't have to follow the same rules as everybody else, if that makes sense.
But in, in return to that, we did. Like, I literally gave you a justification from the twenty-twenty-three League Municipality Study that showed you what every one of these employees should be paid, based on a statewide study. It's not like I said, hey, I like this guy, let's bring him in.
Yeah.
Well, my concern, really, I mean, I haven't got a vote in it. I can see appropriating you money with the twelve, fifteen percent, whatever. What you do with it is your business.
It's not my business.
The city to hear your word, the salary for your people, it's a little shady place in there. I mean, and we have to go through the civil service with our people, but we don't with yours. If they just appropriate the money, unless you make the decision to pay your people.
Every change that I made, including the change in job description that I made, came before the city council. We don't just go out there and wake up one day and decide, we're gonna change the job description and pay them next month. It's approved by the seven members of the board, which are...
Well, how do you handle the money?
It's, it's okay. But Steve, so, see, this is what, this is what I'm asking. Do you think this is something that's gonna be beneficial to your department? Or, just like you said, we're used to not getting anything. We're trying to, we're trying to get out of what we've been doing, is what I'm saying. We don't want people to be forgotten, we don't want people to be left out. Because we, I, I mean, I think you guys are a part of the city. I mean, it is the city's, um, library, it is the city's park and rec department. And we put you guys in place to run it. But we can't, we can't keep doing the same things that we've been doing, and we always end up here. We don't wanna have to keep fixing ten-year or fifteen-year problems in a, in a pool. So, so how do you guys, do, do you guys think this is gonna, what you're requesting is gonna fix the problem? Or would it help to put you guys under the city umbrella to where your employees are more protected, to where you know they're gonna get the cost of living? You know they're gonna get the step raises and so on and so forth? That's what I'm asking.
I think for me, it goes beyond the salaries. I think it goes to, like, for example, fundraising efforts. I think it depends on what changes on that side. Because I'm not gonna get out and raise funds to do extra projects with, if I gotta turn it over and say, I don't get the control. So that's what, that's the assurance I need, is that there's still an incentive to keep that program running at that level.
And we want you to do that, and we love the way that you go out.
If the salaries is the only part of it, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, that's, but I think there's other things that we will have to discuss in addition to that.
We, we don't need to make this decisions on ourselves. We have a board, we answer to them.
Yeah, and I, that's why...
But you're appointed, and I mean, they need to be included in this conversation, because basically, you're doing away with the board.
Well, we, we, we mentioned that, because, well, Lee, let me ask you, Alex, could they do this and they still have their board, but we just assume the responsibility of the employees?
Well, there's another way you can do it, you can take a look at the salary lines, which seem to be the most concerning, figure out a way to, uh, keep them in lockstep by agreeing that the rule is, is that we do treat them the same way, in terms of how we apply raises and COLAs and everything else.
And, and that's what my issue is, that's, that's what I'm concerned about. All the other stuff, I mean, I don't have a problem with them still operating the same way they've been operating, but I'm trying to get out of the park and rec and library being left out.
If you wanna absorb our employees, I have no issue with that whatsoever. But to me, it needs to be something, I mean, we, we obviously gotta fight our employees, that's our job, but you got ten years left, I got ten year... We don't wanna damage the future of Parks and Recreation and Library, to get absorbed into something and still be pushed aside as the last entity that's ever considered. And now we have no control to do fundraising and other things like that.
I think the fundraising mistake, I think there's still a lot of things we have... I like, I see both sides, and I like both sides. I like, the, the main thing I like is following the city, so I know that you're not looking down. I know when we do these COLAs that the Parks and Rec, we're not gonna come back and figure out what money we have left to give to the library and the Parks and Rec. But I do see the side of, well, Ms. Tracy has to raise ten thousand dollars to get this done. Ms. Tracy needs to be able to get her hands on the ten thousand dollars to get her project done without having to go through loops and bounds, and gonna do it. And I know everything that you have to go through. I think we need to sit down and have a conversation.
Well, I mean, my thing is, if you have a question about the salaries, I've given that information four times since October.
Again, I...
On every single person.
But nobody, nobody's questioning, nobody's questioning, I'm not. I'm not questioning, because I'm not questioning what you pay. I'm not questioning who you pay. I only know you work at the Park and Rec and Amber Coop, that's all I know, at Burnham, I know him, too. So I'm not questioning any of those things. I'm trying to figure out how we can make this better moving forward.
Where you won't be, where you won't be left behind.
Well, how about...
I mean, if y'all wanna absorb our employees and consider them employees of Sulicaga, the city of Sulicaga, I'm one-hundred percent for that. But we'd love having input from a board, and like, we have board members that was on there long before I started working there, and then we have new ones. And they're gonna need to train the next guy on what he needs to do. So I mean, we gotta have consistency.
When we have the board conversation, or we have the conversations with y'all's boards, why can y'all not adopt the same pay plan we have, and then implement the employees through the pay plan? And it's just, it's the park and rec and the libraries' pay plan, everything stays the same, that you just operate off the same pay plan we are. And we can, you know, say, in this budget, we can take out the money for salaries, because we'll be doing the salaries, but all the extra that you request for playground equipment for whatever stays in there, above and beyond. But for salaries, y'all's boards, if they agree, can adopt the same pay plan and have it ready to go implemented.
We just have to find a way to fund it.
To fund one.
To get the funded pay plan, just because they have the same pay plan, doesn't mean they have the money.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna pay it. I mean, we pay it down. So it's just like, everybody's gonna be paid on the same pay scale.
If y'all wanna take the payroll line out of our budget, by all means, please.
But you would go by the same rules or, or similar setting up where, you know, every other year?
I would love to have that number that's on Auburn's plan for Parks and Recreation. Well, that number that we suggested is nowhere near that.
Well, I'm saying, it would be the same process, where you know, hey, next year, Hunter's getting this raised, next year, Warren's doing this, type of, you know...
And that's what we were trying to implement. And the one that I put in front of y'all is actually your old plan. It's an every-two-year, two, two to three percent. I mean, if you're gonna give them the every-year raise, with the percentage raises that you're giving everybody else, I'm all about that.
I got, I got one more question.
But it's gonna eventually cost y'all more money.
I was just thinking, because our liabilities are not the same, I mean, for our employees. Because our board set our policies years ago to be very conservative, so that we could function off what we get from the city. So if we're gonna do it, and it's gonna be apples to apples and not apples to oranges, that's a whole other conversation. Because our employees talk about it three weeks, paid vacation, they don't get five to six weeks. And just about everybody over there would end up with about five to six weeks.
If we have two or three people taking two or three weeks off together, we're, we're stuck.
But I guess that's my concern, is are we talking about the same thing?
Well, we can open up the conversation, because we gotta get the boards involved in it.
I'm talking about the same thing, and this is, what you just said is why I'm talking about the same thing. So everybody can be apples to apples. Because if, and if, even if we do this now, next year or two years, when the city employees are offered something else, you're gonna feel that you were left out. And then that conversation is gonna come up to, why weren't we included? So I do think the conversation does need to be had, but how would it, how would it affect part-time people?
Do they both operate off of part-time people, especially the summertime?
The majority of our employees are part-time.
Yeah, but, but that's why I think the conversation does need to be had. And I think everybody shies in... Yeah, but but that's why I think the conversation does need to be had, and I think everybody shies away from the conversation, because we've already always been told that it's gonna cost us more.
It would definitely cost you more.
But I think we need to just do the research so that we can just see the actual numbers, because I, me personally, I just think it needs to be considered, because once, if this is done, there's no telling when you'll be considered for some more money, if that makes sense.
I'm very open to the conversation, and that's what I said when we came two weeks ago. I'm open to having that conversation. I just think it's something that needs to take place with our boards, like you're saying, and we need to make sure we're all talking about the same thing. And I would like to know how it would affect our timeliness if we're able to respond to the public in the same manner that we do. That's my big concern, is the quality of service.
With me, and I, and I'm not a um, I'm not a professional at this, but in me, in my mind, I'm just thinking we're just gonna absorb, like you said, take the payroll line out, and we just absorb that, we implement them into our pay plan, you know, based on where they are and where they fall, we implement them into the pay plan, and then we just, we move forward. But of course, we have to adjust your budget based on taking the money out for um for salaries.
I know in the budget that I've, I've seen our line items, you have one just for salaries. Y'all wanna take that out of our complete budget, absorb our employees and you pay our employees and all their benefits?
We pay the benefits anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, you give us appropriation, we pay it, then we, y'all pay it, then you give it to us and we write you a check. It's a really crazy system.
Yeah, but I mean, but the city pays it anyway, though, so you get reversed.
But I mean, we, we're still gonna need budgets that we can have very quick access to and hopefully keep a board that we can go to to make those quick decisions.
Again, in my mind, nothing would change except us absorbing the um, the employees' salaries, and, but that's just in typically.
And some, and some civil service board members, they would follow up your civil service board, maybe you wanna get that in.
So it was waived.
And we didn't waive that, that would be the only thing that would hold them back, and some stuff is in civil service board actions.
So this is, this is what I'm um.
But regarding tonight, like, we have to have that conversation for the twenty-five budget for coming up with the boards.
I know, but it still needed to be asked today, because we can't ask it in October and then try to.
Yeah, but regarding tonight, we gotta go, 'cause we have, what, the hundred and forty-three thousand?
So let me, so let me ask this again, so since that was brought up, so the amounts that you guys asked for, that's for the rest of the um, that's for the rest of the year, right? That's for the rest of the year, and it remind me again, so the amount you asked for is for the rest of the year, so are these amounts gonna increase for a whole year, so is this just for six months?
The number that you have from Parks and Rec is for in the title.
For twelve months.
Okay, so technically, this year, you would only get half of what you asked for in.
Whatever months is left.
Okay.
And here we got cut.
Yeah, but they're not getting all of it.
All right, okay, so Alex, what's the math on that?
'Cause that's the other question, is this gonna be a May thing or a June thing?
May, it was, it was May from the beginning.
Yeah.
It was, I think it was May twentieth when um anybody would get a um, a check. It was always May, May twentieth.
See, the check that we receive in May is for our June finances. Normally, we receive that check the last week of May.
Alex, we talked about that um yesterday, so would it be technically the money they get in May?
It would be for May, everybody would get theirs for May.
No, if you get paid in May, the money isn't for May, or is it for that first week, the money that they're gonna get?
If you put it on April's appropriation, those people will get paid in May.
Hold on, hold on.
If they're paid at the end of month for the previous month, is what Nicole said, so when we give them their check in May, that's for May, not for June. We pay it after the fact.
So what he's asking, and and I see what he's asking him, so what he's asking is, yeah. He's asking it's gonna be five months or six months, and it's gonna be five months.
May, yeah.
So five months.
So it'd be on the check that we receive at the end of May.
Yeah.
So our employees would not get their raise till June. 'Cause we, we have money in the bank before we pay them, like, we don't go in reverse.
Hold on, I can't, I can't hear everybody. I'm confused, hold on.
The May's check that we write on May thirty-third, which we're now gonna write earlier, is going to cover from the first of May to the end of May.
Okay.
That's how the city does it.
That's not how we do our budgets.
But the money that, so, so are you paying yours, are you paying yours? Yeah, so you're paying.
My appropriation that I get the last week of the May goes in the first of the next month and covers the bills for them.
But the understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, nobody was getting money until May, right?
That's what I, that's what I always understood.
That's correct. 'Cause we weren't supposed to approve anything in April to start in May.
So it's gonna be in May.
So back, the months left, what, what is that number? May, June, July, August, September.
What's the number?
Ten thousand a month for him, but the city's going to keep the fringe. If we don't have an affirmative number forward.
You're just speaking saggly.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
It's gonna be around nine thousand a month.
Sixty total.
So can you do the math right quick on those five months left?
Cannot, because I don't know their tiers, I don't know the percentages. When we sat down, we talked to Steve today on the phone, me and Sandy, they're asking for forty-six, when Sandy did rough math, it was fifty-one.
That's with free, right?
Yes, for five months. No, not for five months.
For a year.
Yeah, for a year. I understand they're asking that out.
So can you do?
It's eight hundred and fifty dollars extra a month.
More?
More.
More than what he's getting now?
Yes.
I know, but what I'm saying is um, the dollar amount we need, because we, we got a calculator started over there to where we start calculating from our grand total. So the half of the amount for the five months that they're gonna get, it needs to come off that total so we can see what's left.
Yeah. I see where you're saying, I thought you meant almost twenty where they're getting it.
No.
Twenty-one, two fifty.
Okay, so what's, what's our um, what's our balance? So basically, you guys are, are getting what you requested.
Just for salaries, not for increase of cost of anything else.
Just, just for the salaries, and then there was something else you asked for. Was there a fifty thousand, it was forcing supplies or something?
Well, you know, currently, which is why we will continue to need a budget, like, we pay for every single thing on every one of our properties. Toilet paper, light fixtures, paint, everything we do, everything has gone up, including fuel costs and stuff like that. So we can't continue to be level-funded and provide the same services that we offered in twenty twenty-three.
What, where is this sheet? So how much did he ask for?
Remember, that's the six point six percent that he inflated. And where'd you get six point six percent, Steve?
It was off Google when y'all asked us to turn it in last year in June. That was the guesstimated inflation rate from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. It's now three point three percent, is what it is today.
It's three point three percent? That's an average, so not necessarily.
Right, it's a nationwide average, pulling a number out of the sky, but, you know, when you ask us to project three or four months out, and we're not even to fall sports yet, or we haven't finished summer day camp, stuff like that, it's really hard for us to project that far out.
I know, that's what we're saying, it was hard for us to plan this money that we haven't received yet, that's what, that's what made this hard. So Tracy, on this um, this, this percentage that Steve is talking about that he's asking for, is that on yours as well?
No, we.
You just said the level funding plus.
Yes, I just did the level funding plus pay increase, and I did the same municipal worker salary survey and compare them, and we stayed anywhere from minimum to average. We didn't go max on anything, even with the employees that had been there longer, we didn't do that.
But if we consider um, this for the um, and Tracy, your, your employees don't even get paid gas for travel, do they?
We give one stop at the end of the year. Personal vehicles are used for everything. Many casual goes out to about ten, fifteen different places every couple of weeks. We deliver the books to the schools, we do all that, nursing homes, senior centers, we use personal vehicles and do a gas stop in the middle.
Steve, if we inflated that, you said the national average is three, whatever, if we inflated that to four and a half, could you make that work?
Yep.
I think we need to um, give the libraries something, they even buy their own toilet paper.
Oh, we did too.
Yeah, but that's what, that's what.
Cash banks.
I know, but that's what you mentioned, that's why I'm saying this, because that's what you mentioned, you said toilet paper, this and that, but you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, but Ms. Tracy didn't ask, and don't tempt me to the wrong way, but I'm just gonna say, Ms. Tracy didn't ask for.
She didn't ask, though.
But she did ask for the salaries, so.
Level funding in the salaries, we'll make it work. I mean, we have, we're operating on forty-one thousand more than we were in two thousand and six, so we'll make it work.
Okay, so I can't raise money for salaries, the salaries is what you're getting first.
What I'm saying, he said, he said the national average is three, there you go. So let's take this to four point five, inflate it here, and see what that number is, and then take it from this number Alex has got, and let's make sure we still got money to operate on. Because at the end of the day, it's taxpayer money that we really got to worry about, you get what I'm saying?
I do, I agree, you agree.
Alex, can you do that?
So what do we need to tell our employees?
Uh, keep praying and doing a real good job.
You know, they've been asking ever, ever since everybody else got a raise, hey, where's our?
We just, well, we just told you, Steve, that's when you're gonna get, you're gonna get your check, you're gonna get your check in May twentieth. So right now, we're, we're adding you guys to the list, because we do think you guys are important, and you're getting the um, the rates that you asked for and the four point five inflation.
And we will open the conversation with our boards included further.
And I think um, maybe we can get back to you guys, 'cause I think that conversation needs to be had before October, before we start the new budget cycle.
Or maybe they can come here and bring their, after they've had their meeting, them and their board president come, and we just all sit down and talk together and see what comes up, or maybe not, a meeting, or maybe come to City Hall and talk with the, your liaison and council president, the mayor, and y'all just sit down and talk together, whichever point, just make sure everybody's on the same sheet of music, 'cause this is a big deal, coming out of your own department, coming up under the city, 'cause there's a lot of, I know both y'all do a lot, you do a fabulous job of serving the city, but I know that there's a lot of different moving pieces in y'all's departments to make it go on a day-to-day basis.
So what we'll do, we'll just get with Alex and try to set up a deadline, 'cause I know, um, we know when you guys have your boards, but just make sure to go ahead and put it in your board's ear that it was mentioned. And then, just about the conversation being mentioned, it's not saying that this is what the council wants to do. It's saying the council brought this up and wants to know if this is something that would benefit us. It may not benefit you guys, you and your board may decide, well, at this time, we request that we don't do anything, because this isn't gonna benefit us, or you may go back and look and say, hey, this is gonna be good for my people, and this is something we want, and then we can move forward, if that makes sense.
But we still, we still will need to leave this meeting tonight without agreeing to, all right, we're gonna give the next amount for the five remaining months.
We did, that's what she's doing, we already agreed.
Inflation.
Yeah, because the totals they gave us was for the whole year, and she's doing it for the five months, along with Steve's four point five um.
Inflation.
Yeah, that's what we did. So that's it, you guys, unless you have any more questions for us. And then we're waiting on Alex to tell us what's um.
'Cause we got minus that number from one to three. We got ten eighty-two, also back on the end this morning, minus the one forty-three. Go, I'll be sure.
But it's. It's half of it, it's half of it and half of sheets, 'cause it's five on, yeah, we, yeah, we're dividing it by two ways, times five, so we're gonna divide this by two and multiply, so it's not as close as we had um.
But the grand total is that.
Yeah, for a year.
Lee, you ready to check the numbers?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so, we were at one forty-three zero eight-five.
Hang on, don't touch, you talk, hang on.
Let me know when you're ready, Lee.
Ready.
Park and rec salaries are twenty-one thousand two fifty. We took the total, divided it by twelve, multiplied it by five.
Yep.
Okay, that brings us to one twenty-one eight thirty-five.
Yep.
We took the total of eighty-two thousand for the library, divided by twelve, multiplied by five, and I got thirty-four two forty-one.
Okay.
Subtract that from one twenty-one eight thirty-five, and you get eighty-seven five ninety-four. Get park and rec ten percent inflation after you subtract the salaries.
I thought it was four, I thought it was four point five.
Four point five.
I thought he said three point three. Okay.
Four point five.
So we're going to four point five.
Yeah, you said ten.
You said ten.
No, I meant three point three is what I did.
No, when, that was a national average.
We're not gonna object, are you, Steve?
Three point, four point five is what we had said, man.
Thank you. All right, Lee, so that's eighty-seven five ninety-four minus four point five percent is fourteen two seventy-seven. And I'm not doing cents. So the total remaining is seventy-three three seventeen.
Four point five percent of eighty-seven is how much?
No, eighty-seven five ninety-four is the balance.
Yep, eighty-seven five ninety-five.
All right, I took the three seventeen.
Yep.
And multiplied that by the four point five percent.
Got it, okay, and that's fourteen seven two seventy-seven.
Fourteen two seventy-seven.
Okay.
Yep, not doing pennies. Subtract that from the eighty-seven five ninety-four, and I come up with seventy-three three seventeen.
Agreed.
All right, he agrees.
Okay, so next on the um, the line item is safe, and we've already taken that thirty-something thousand that we had to pay for trans, transportation um, out of this. Um, I know they asked for some additional funds for the gardener. I'm personally, I'm, I'm not in favor of um, funding that for this fiscal year.
I, I don't see where we can, we can afford it right now, I'm sorry.
Do you have it coming, Lee? Okay, all right, so next on the line item is the Talladega um, A R C. Yeah, it was five, it's four thousand seven hundred and fifty thousand, what did, what was this for?
Mayor working at twenty-seven. Yeah, the mayor working at twenty-seven.
The twenty-seven fifty would bring them back to what they were in twenty-three.
Is that all, they won't just wanna be back to where they were?
No, their request was forty-seven, the mayor was twenty-seven.
So the mayor's just saying, we should just level fund them?
Forty-seven additional, forty-seven.
Forty-seven. Oh, yeah.
I think, I think we should level fund this one back to twenty twenty-three.
Same with the twenty-seven fifty, I, I said what Tiff said.
Just level fund this?
Minus that seventy-three three seventeen by twenty-seven.
So it's thirty, it's thirty-two, go ahead.
Brings you to seventy thousand five sixty-seven.
Okay, but we're, we're level funding them back to their twenty-three, twenty-three budget, the thirty-two thousand seven um, hundred and fifty dollars, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so um, Trac, this is what we did, this is, okay, all right, so we can move on, but then we have to pay this thirty-two nine fifteen, right?
Right.
All right, the next one is the um, the museum. So on the museum, um.
Ms. Judy?
Ms. Judy, did you um, did you get those quotes that you were talking about?
Still waiting.
Okay, so um, just when you get those quotes, just let us know.
Okay.
All right, so we're gonna um, we're gonna level fund the museum. All right, we got the Board of Education. Okay, now to the airport. I know there was um, a few questions about the airport, is he here?
Was Wade coming, Lee?
Wade was coming.
All right.
Was this for the hangers?
Well.
This is for, this is for paying and repairing the hangers, they've done two-thirds, there's one third left.
And it was, and this was a one-time cost.
Yes, and it's a return on investment as well.
But he is asking for some additional money, which I don't think we should give any additional money right now, but I.
We got the safety something to play with, I, I agree with you.
But what about the um, that twenty-one, if we were to help them with that, could that come out of something else? Could that be considered?
Where does their rent go, Lee? I know that, that, doesn't people that, you know, come in with planes, don't they pay rent?
I'm saying, if we pay for them to build that, it'll, it's a return on investment, rent goes out.
Okay, where does their money go?
Maintaining the existing was important, 'cause it got some that they can't rent, because they're falling apart, so they can't all be rented. So what he's asking about.
He said, he said the rent.
They're asking if we, say, we wanted to fix it, are we getting the twenty-one back in rent, or does that stay in the airport authorities' pocket?
They get it back and they can fund their operations.
But last time, we let the bars in my room.
Then one year over, let the bar.
Okay, so if, if they're funding their operations, then they're funding most of them, okay.
But they also, they also did, how many did they do?
They did two-thirds, so I guess they did.
And this is the last.
So how, how much, how much was the hanger?
Uh, I think it was sixty-six. Uh, I think it was sixty-six thousand or forty-eight thousand, something like that, they did two-thirds of their money.
They want us to fix one hanger, which is gonna cost us how much?
Which is the thirty-something.
I thought it was twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand.
It's twenty-one thousand. But what I'm asking is, could that?
We can just agree to level fund it until we're able to, we're looking at it in October, since it's so close.
All right, okay.
Level fund, we're looking at it in October.
But is it? We make it put it on the capital. Alex, let's see if I add it to the capital list, since that is a one-time purchase.
The hang all did, painting and maintenance are not repaired unless they're having to actually change structural or something.
They may have to use some of that rent, man.
Okay, all right.
Question, are we level funding them to FY twenty-three?
Yes.
So, that's an additional eighteen eight fifty.
So, why, why is an additional eighteen eight fifty?
Because we only gave them twenty.
Uh, okay, all right. Because we, we agreed that at least give the level funding back, that's not additional.
Okay.
So, if we take this, that means that makes sense, okay?
All right, um, I'm sorry. Laura, we're on the, um, lead fifty-one seven seventeen.
Seventy-one seven seventeen.
Is that what you got?
Yep.
I'm gonna make sure somebody's checking.
Fifty-one one?
It's fifty-one seven seventeen, that's what nearly came up with.
Okay. All right, so, where did Ashton go?
I don't know.
All right, so, we're down to the, um, to the I D D. So, what, um, what's their additional request?
They asked, they asked thirteen seven fifty.
And how much, what's the difference on the level funding present one? Alex, what's the difference on this one?
Twenty thousand.
So, the, okay, so the mayor's requesting that we level fund them.
That's correct.
Okay, what we got left?
We got fifty-one seven seventeen before we touched that one.
Okay, so getting that one.
I believe it's four as well.
All right, so, Lee.
Thirty-one seven seventeen.
All right.
All right, the utilities for the Little League scouts. So, we pay these utilities, I know you mentioned that, um, this has been coming in under what we budgeted.
Yes, and it's a reimbursable.
And we pay, um, Steve and then we just give your money back. So, how, how have that, what's, what's that annual, do you have an annual amount on what has been the last two years?
I can get that, I don't have it off the top of my head. I literally, we receive the, the bill, we pay the bill, we show her where we paid it, she writes us.
So, is there any way to reduce this is what I'm asking. Do you think we can reduce this? I mean, it doesn't matter, even though.
Because I drive by and there's no lights on or anything out there.
I don't.
Yeah, and I heard that too, Laura, do you know anything about that?
I gotta be cautious, you know, with my tactic, but they're operational.
Ooh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay.
So, my recommendation, because we're going to get money each month, is once Steve has exhausted that budget for Little League, then we just come back to the council and ask for more.
Okay.
We don't need to spend it until we need to spend it.
That's correct.
All right, so what, so what is, so we're just gonna take it all the way out?
No, we're just, we're just not gonna give them any more money.
Okay, sounds good.
So, thirty-one stays as is.
All right, and the museum.
The twenty, right?
Yeah, the twenty.
I meant twenty, yeah.
We're not, we're not giving the additional, um. All right, so the museum building utilities expense, we pay these anyway, right?
That's correct, same thing.
So, we don't need to, um, add this to it, okay?
That's the recommendation.
All right, the commercial, um, development authority. I know there was, um, talk on this one, I know there was a few questions about this one, they wanted to get a director and the cost of that director was sixty-five thousand.
I think we need more discussion on that, we need a better plan for how that's gonna be spent, we may wanna share part of it. I think it's just too fast just to start handing money out without a plan.
I second that thought.
And then to me, I just think since we're, this is new to us, we may wanna start, if we can agree to have this position, I think we may wanna start it as a part-time position.
Yeah, I don't think we're ready for full-time position.
Number one, I'm, I'm fine, obviously, my opinion is they need it because I've been there firsthand with them. But they're not the only, but they're one of the most frequent that we get return on investment with of all the businesses that they brought in. Brian told us that last time, and there's way more to come. It's going to slow down, Brian's already had to step back one time and luckily had to come back. But with somebody, this is a volunteer board, keep in mind, if somebody like Brian says, I can't do anymore, dah 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 dah. You know, when holiday season comes around and he has to step, not step down, but not be involved as much, a lot of things don't get done. Um, because he, I don't know how he does it, I guess it's Santa magic, but he, he gets all his stuff done even when it's during holidays. For us to expect that amount of return consistently on year-year basis is not gonna happen.
And I understand, I just think we need to start part-time, I'm not saying we don't need.
And that's fine, but.
Even the mayor's suggesting ten.
Well, we can't bump them down, there's no way this world will get bumping down.
We're not, um, we're just talking about the additional, um, that he asked for the, um, for the salaries. So, what's the, um, what's the amount to put them to level funding?
Sixty, the level was twenty, correct? So, we're not gonna give him sixty-five, I mean, I, I, at least at minimum, it would be forty.
I agree with Ashton on that, they, they, Brian did so much time into it.
If you're looking at almost three hundred thousand dollars he gives us a year.
Yeah, their return investment is huge.
Hold on, let's, 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 let's do it, hold on, Nate, hold on, so Ashton, let's let Ashton finish, you, you finish, Ashton? All right, Laura?
I agree with what Ashton said, you know, their return investment to the city is pretty good, what they do. And, uh, you know, Brian's devoted so much time volunteering, you know, I mean, the packages that he puts together for these future businesses are impressive. And I mean, not all volunteers.
Okay.
I think it's a fair request, you know, at least part-time.
All right.
Actually, we do need to get it back up to level because I was not looking at the forty-five we cut.
Yeah.
So, we cut forty-five, he's asking for thirty-five, so he's asking for eighty more, but he needs thirty to get back up to.
To level funding from fiscal year twenty-three.
Correct.
Maybe an additional ten.
All right.
In twenty-three, he got thirty, we gave him twenty, so that's ten.
So, so. So, what's the amount to get him back to the level funding from twenty-three, what's that amount?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
First, we can't, he cannot point to that, they cannot do that.
But hold on, that's why I said we're gonna all just say our piece one at a time.
Is it my turn?
Hold on, we're gonna all say our piece one at a time and then we can make our decision based on what we discuss. All right, Nate?
Can I go next? Here's the, I don't think anybody's saying not to fund the director. I mean, we know, I'll know you have one piece property left on two eight that I know of, okay? I think you can fund half of when October gets here, Nate, and then let them fund the other part of it and just see how it goes. We get somebody that's good and does a good job as Brian, and then we can fund the whole thing. But I am not on board for funding the whole thing right now. And I'm not, I'm on board with giving them ten to get them back up to where they was because that's what we told everyone when we cut everyone. We would try to get them back up to level funding, am I right or wrong, didn't we say that?
We did.
Okay, that, that, that's where I'm at with it.
All right, any, anybody has anything else to say about this?
Which is what the mayor.
I do.
All right, let's let Ashton talk.
The thought around the C D A is that they have properties they own, they advertise them to market them and try to sell. And that is true, they do that. They also are another recruiting arm and, uh, for the city that goes out and gets these properties, they have businesses that come and ask them that they wanna relocate here. And they're, they head up with businesses or building owners and stuff like that and try to get these people in. How do you think we get the incentive packages to us where we don't have all that headache of coming up with this stuff and the survey and the presentation and the incentive? They work, he works hand in hand with Brian Cash to make sure we get something presented to us that's semi-acceptable. So, we can get that off of a plate and not have to worry about it.
Okay, so let me ask you this, Ashton, so I think, I don't think we're saying no. I'm saying I think it needs to start off as a part-time position and I do think we need to, um.
That's fine, I'm talking about the money as a whole.
That's what I'm gonna ask you next, let, let me, I'm gonna ask you that next. So, if we fund this in October for a part-time position to start off to see how it goes, what are you, what are your reasons for saying giving him more than ten for the rest of this fiscal year?
For right now.
Yeah, for right now, what is your reason for giving him more than his level funding?
Well, obviously, he's, he's gonna be able to hire somebody before the money kicks in for twenty twenty-five. But if you take that out of, out of the, the way, there's gotta be a lot of work done to the one property that he has that we have to, we have helpers, volunteers, landowners that are around him to say, hey, if you do this, I'll put in my money and help my land so we can work together as a team. But right now, they can't do anything with that land because they don't have the capital to do so.
Right.
And then there's that term, money, takes money to make money, and then they got to have the upfront capital to make this land even possible to sell. Because as you know, not anything can be put right there.
And I understand what everybody is saying, but we do have to take into consideration that these are volunteer boards. If, you know, and I always say everybody's the same but different, I know you're gonna say they bring revenue. But also, I'm just gonna use somebody as an example, you know, the beautification council. People appreciate what they do for the city as well because when people walk down the street, they like to see things that are pretty, you know? So, let's see if we, we're either gonna try to meet somewhere in the middle, if we're gonna give them over the ten, or we're just gonna level fund. So, this is how I think we should do it.
I'm, 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 I'm on the level fund train.
Okay, so a level fund train, to give them only ten, Ashton, what if we can give them additional ten to make it twenty? Because it seems that you and Laura feel really strongly about them getting some additional funding. Lee, where are you on this?
Uh, it could go either way, I guess if we gave them ten, we could get them started and then we could do something else in the next fiscal year.
Did you get on board for that?
I'd say twenty for the rest of the year.
I think twenty, making the middle.
Did you get on board with additional ten?
No!
No, next, okay, all right, so.
Ask you a question.
Yeah.
Would the twenty be for the part-time until?
No, it has nothing to do. It has nothing to do with an invoice, he's saying some money to do some groundwork.
Yes.
Well, any work, any profit I have.
And another thing too, how does they, how does their money, is that a purchase order as well, or do we just give them ten thousand dollars and they spend it as they please?
That we just give them a check, they do with it as they see fit.
Okay, that's.
What's the issue with that?
Well, I have.
Same issue with everything else. We just write blank check, we're writing out blank check, we write checks right here and trusting people to do whatever they do.
And we don't get an invoice or.
You don't see the financials.
You don't get an invoice, you don't get a.
Okay.
They, 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 didn't they, when they originally presented their budget, didn't they give us some type of paperwork with their budget?
Yeah, they have financials every month from their meetings.
Yeah.
So, how, so how much do they have in the bank now, do you know that, Ashton? So, let's.
That's true, we didn't have a meeting last month for this one.
They show us, yeah.
Remember they sold the building for a hundred and fifty thousand, they're gonna spend that on that.
But they do, okay, so since they do have some money in the bank, because there is some money in the bank, maybe we should just level fund them at the ten.
I agree, and then, and they can use that ten, if they need any additional for that site work that Ashton's talking about, let them go ask for it.
And then we can, um.
That's how we treat everybody.
They have some money in the bank. Because we aren't, because right now, uh, what I'm saying is, I do wanna help them fund a part-time director in October.
Okay. Ashton, what are your thoughts, Justin?
I say twenty.
I mean, I, I do think twenty's making the middle, I.
All right, well, we, I guess we don't, we don't do it the old school way, so, to level fund them at ten. All right, we're gonna level fund them at ten, Alex.
How much do we have left?
Twenty-one seven seventeen.
Okay, so next on the list is, um, tele net work expense.
Well, she's already taken care of it.
Okay, that's right, that's the eight that came off the top, Laura, we'll catch you up to, some of these things came off the top. All right, so the, um, historical, um, committee expense. So, are they asking for, um.
They need seven hundred and fifty dollars to be leveled.
Okay, so take the seven fifty out of that.
The F one, the historical commission and FY twenty-three, they got thirteen hundred. We gave them three grand because of their justification is what the council approved in October to get them.
What do we give it to them for?
I don't remember.
So, that was a one-time cost then, wasn't, wasn't?
She likes to try to do it.
She applies each year for that.
So, to get them back to what we promised them in October is the seven fifty, or should we just leave them where they are?
Alex said.
Says budget, budget recommendations to lead.
But yes, she will.
What is she asking for, Alex?
Did you get them?
Okay.
I think it's a sign, is it a, what is it?
I thought it was a sign, but I don't remember.
Yeah, there is, I think it's a sign.
Those historical, like, say the state of Lubbock, those historical ones.
Okay, so, we're gonna add that seven fifty to it?
Sure.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars?
That's fair.
Oh, and then too, guys, um, I forgot, we did, because the hospital didn't come the last time. So, they did send me a list of capital items that they needed some help with. I did tell them, you know, we, we didn't wanna give out any money, you know, just, and we not know what the money was for. And this is something, um, looks like we can't consider anything right now, but we do need to have it in front of us to possibly consider in October. I got a list of things and I'll share it with everybody, there was just a list of pieces of equipment that they were asking for some help with that they needed.
These are lists of things that they need to figure out a way to do that they don't have any money for, it's just a random list. Uh, there's, they're, they're all of equal importance.
Yeah, but of course.
And they don't expect all of them, they're just looking for.
Do we have any word yet on the state representatives giving the hospital money there?
Yeah, we had, I got in touch with, uh, a few senators and our congressmen, and they were listening to them and they were, uh, okaying. They had filled out certain amount paperwork had been put in for appropriations for equipment they needed, so, I don't know, imaging, some beds and some other things.
So, how can, um, do, how do you think they can get in?
Children's work, what I got at, uh, Hotel Dega, they got as much as one point five, many different senators and congressmen for projects they needed up there. That's reason I introduced you to our hospital, because I do, they need the money. And they're in the process of forgiving that money. It's up to them, you know, how they fill out the paperwork and send it to the senators and the congressmen to appropriate that money for their needs.
And then again, like Lee said, these were things that just came up, some unexpected expenses, again, this isn't, we can't afford it now, we don't have, how much money we have? We don't have.
Twenty thousand.
Listen, Reed, you know, I hate to have to level fund these things, but the economy's hit us hard and it has everybody else, it's something we say. We got everything from, well, we gotta pay for orders, the city's in debt for fifty-five million dollars right now.
But you know.
We gotta pay for that, pay that note on that fifty-five million.
And I understand where you're coming from, Mayor, I do understand, and also.
And don't, don't take into account the school money, that comes out of a separate, you can't add that all together.
Well, we're responsible for it.
Pay for.
City's generally responsible for fourteen of it.
But it's, yeah, but it's okay, we're all on the same page, everything's okay, but since they submitted this request. But since they submitted this request, it is, you know, my responsibility to share it because they do wanna send this over to the council, hey, this is what we would like some additional help with, and to keep in mind, guys, we did ask, remember, we did, we did ask them. So, I do have the list. I know that it can't be considered today, but we're gonna pass this list around and maybe we can consider this in October once we receive some more, um, tax money for the rest of the year. All right, so, Alex, um, we went through this, um, we have our total.
The remainder's twenty thousand nine sixty-seven.
That's what I come up with, Lee, did you come up with the same amount?
Same amount.
Same amount.
All right.
All right.
So, I'll type it out and resend it out tomorrow so everybody can look at it, if that's what you wanna do.
Um.
Just in case I transpose a number or something.
I got it.
So, everybody heard, so those are the things that are going to be, um, voted on and based on our discussion passed at the next, um, meeting unless some people have a change of heart in two weeks.
So, everything will be passed at the next meeting.
Check's written at the end.
Check's written at the end of May, middle of May.
All right.
Middle of May, correct.
So, are, are we ready to go on to, um, number three of the work session?
I have a question, did we fully fund, uh, the porks and re- requests?
We did, and they got, uh, we met them with their, um, tell me what it is again, that percentage we gave them?
We gave them four and a half.
They asked for six point six, we gave them four and a half, and Ms. Tracy, um, got hers as well, the library.
Okay.
Anything else, Laura, after you look up your sheet?
I'm good, I think everything else was good, I'm.
Yes, we considered them first.
Okay.
All right, all right, so we're gonna move on to number three, discussion necessary by Karen, tapping for a special event license for community summer kickoff event. tapping for a special event license for community summer kickoff event on June first, twenty twenty-four. Central Park Coordinator with Parks and Recreation. Hey, how are you today?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
This is my first time, so I have no idea what to do.
Just tell us a little bit what you're gonna have.
Alright, um, it's a community summer kickoff event. It's pretty much our town needs God. Um, it's pretty much just to try to bring people to cry. There'll be three gospel groups singing, two speakers. Um, I'll have free hot dogs, chips, drinks, um, I'm trying to get bouncy houses, water slides, snow cones, we'll do face paintings. And it'll probably start about twelve o'clock and go till, mm, eight maybe, I'm not really sure. Just tell everyone it lasts.
Sure.
Okay, so the only, only thing I have, I always say the only thing that I, I spit out ten questions. So, the things that I have, I just wanna make sure that this event can solve the way you have in mind. So, and Steve, I'm gonna pick on you, I'll call on you. Can we make sure, can, do you mind talking to her to make sure that she has everything she needs, whether it's a business license? I don't know if there's gonna be food, something from the health department, or whatever. We just don't wanna, we don't wanna give our blessing and then when it's time for this to happen, you didn't, you didn't check off all of your boxes.
Well, I do call city hall, or wherever, to make sure that I was, um, handling everything, and that's why I told y'all I had to do this. And I had to have a special, um, events license, that's what I'm here for.
Okay.
And she, she has, she has a business license here. She's my neighbor, and I've connected her with the city clerk, so.
You should've just said Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff, just my name.
Jeff take care of it.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure she has everything she needs, so that way.
We'll make sure all her i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. Well, I don't have any, um, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Michael, if you let me know you have any.
Thank you, is that it?
That's it?
Thanks, Cap.
You have a good day, well, good evening. Alright? We're on to number four. Discussion necessary by Stephanie McGregor for a special event license for back-to-school summer bash event, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, Noble Park Coordinator with Parks and Recreation. Hey, Stephanie, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, tell us a little bit about what you're trying to do.
I don't know if you all have copies of the flyer, uh, or, uh, anything, but I did make copies.
Yes.
Like a copy link. Yes, and I also have, um, a letter that I was, I was sending out to local, uh, businesses and churches about what I'm trying to do. Um, for those who don't know me, my name is Stephanie McGregor. I am the owner of Relentless Christian Clothing LLC. It is an online clothing business that I've started here in Silicon with the intent on helping kids learn more about Christ, leading them into the right path, trying to be a positive influence. Um, this event that I am currently trying to host is a back-to-school bash. Uh, the back-to-school bash consists of, um, giving away school supplies, um, for kids who need it. Um, you know, as the rise of inflation is happening, you know, uh, help is needed, and so that is what I aim to do. Um, the summer bash part of it, because it's gonna be in the heat of the summer, we're gonna need water. So, it's gonna be like a water park kind of thing. Um, I don't know if anybody else has anything?
I'm good.
I got a record.
Okay, alright. Um, but I'm looking to host it, uh, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, between ten A M. to five, um, at Noble Park. Um, and I was planning on having vendors, um, food trucks, um, craft vendors, uh, retail vendors of all kinds, uh, just making it really more so like a community event. Um, and just having fun, um, getting kids out the house, having fun, and so, so I hope that you all would support it, would be nice.
Well, thank you so much, um, Stephanie. I think this is a really good thing that you're trying to do, and I hope it turns out as a success. Again, I wanna ask Alex, because I wanna make sure you have everything you need. Let me ask you this, do we have like a sort of checklist of things like this when people come into the office and say, hey, this is what I wanna do, and we hand in, hand them this checklist and they can check it off and bring it back with their proof of the checklist to make sure that?
We don't. The only thing that's required is any vendor that's taking in money has to have a business license, and any food vendor has to have a business license and a house or a state.
Okay, well, let, let me ask this to try to help make it easy, and I'm not trying to give you in your office any additional work because we.
No, that's fine.
Is there any way you can get her contact information and set her an appointment with the office this week so that she knows everything she, um, has to have? And it's explained to her?
Yeah, we'll have Erica take care of that.
Alright, and maybe if we can make that a process, that it just make it easier for people to have things in Silicon, and it'll make it easier on you guys as well.
Yes, we would like to share.
Alright.
If I may interject, um, I have been in contact with Ms. Erica, um, probably a total of seven times.
Okay.
Uh, I've been planning this event for about the past two months. And so, uh, again, this is something I really wanna see happen. Um, I, as a business owner, am aware you need licenses. Um, in no way, form or fashion, am I trying to incorporate people who don't have them. Um, and if they don't have them, I will definitely lead them to you all and say, hey, get your license. Um, it is very important, and it's something that I do value, so, um, yes, uh, Ms. Erica has even offered and extended the invitation for me to have contact with her to go through and che- uh, check out her list of, uh, businesses here in Silicon that are in good standing. And so, um, I am definitely looking forward to working closely with her to get that.
Well, it sounds good. Looks like I know what I was talking about, dude.
No, you're good, you're good, very good.
Yeah, thank you so much, and I'm glad that they've been able to help you, and like I said, I'm, I wish you nothing but success with your event. And if I get a chance, I will, um, try to come by and check it out.
Yes, sir. I mean, yes, ma'am, yes, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Number six.
Alright, number five.
Number six.
Number six, discussion necessary by Silicon Police Chief Kelly Johnson to retire K nine Officer Drago effective April sixteen, twenty twenty-four.
I can't wait to hear this.
Are you gonna, um, you wanna do it now during the work session, or you wanna do it during the council meeting, during the mayor's, um, stuff?
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
Okay, well, let's do that. I think that'll be a little bit more official.
Alright.
Alright, so number, um, seven, discussion necessary, um, by Silicon Police Chief Kelly Johnson to buy out the contract of certified police officer Malcolm Kelly in the amount of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cent funded from unused salaries.
Alex, I thought we maybe talked about the travel training, uh.
Guess where we want to go, bro?
We've, we've got opportunity to hire a certified officer. He's only been with Talladega for one year. So, his, he's, his contract would have to be bought out. Uh, they've submitted a, uh, a number for us to pay. Do you have that exactly? Sixteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Uh, and what this is for is this is for his salary while he was at work and for his, uh, time in the police academy, what they were out for the police academy, what they're out for his salary. This is pretty close, maybe a little less than what we would spend if we were sending somebody to the police academy. Uh, right now, our salary is a little more than Talladega, so we'd pay a little more in salary. So.
Would they go into a contract like this and if they left during the tenure year, we wouldn't get a buyout as well?
Okay, his, his, uh, he would come under the state statute that requires him to stay two years. But we have talked with Jane and with Kathy, and then we're gonna ask him to sign a five-year contract. And I, and I've also talked to him, and he said he's hoping. We're gonna ask him to sign a five-year contract that would, uh, after his term that he's supposed to serve, uh, it would prorate a little, every year get a little less. We, uh, we, we would get the sixteen thousand back if he left before his two years. He falls under the two-year, and I think I told you three years earlier, but because of when he was sent to the police academy, he falls under the old statute, which is two years. So, he'd be with us for two years or somebody have to pay us our sixteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty.
And, and you interviewed and all his references and everything, you checked out the way it should?
We, we've talked to him, we've talked to, we've done his background check. Uh, he came to psych eval, day and physical, everything was good, so. The only thing we're waiting on is for you guys to vote to give us the money to purchase his contract.
It's gonna come from unused salaries, correct?
We've, we've got money there, we've al- we've got money in our, uh, travel training conference.
Okay.
So.
Where do you want that money from? I just would hate to short the police department on their training.
Well, when we, uh, that's right, it's actually a salary item, so it's, should really be made.
If this person comes aboard, how many's short are we then?
We'll be short, uh, when they comes up, we'll be short six until I retire, when we be back to seven.
You got any, do we have any in the academy chief?
We don't, we just graduated three.
Excellent.
Graduated three just last week.
Well, recruit some more before you leave, Mundy. Do the best you can.
They're coming. I, I think people are hearing and, and you guys are helping enough to where they're coming, they're, they're seeing that we've got some good stuff going on here.
Right. I have a problem.
I don't have it, I'm good.
Thanks, Kelly.
Alright, so, um, number eight, discussion, um, that is necessary regarding the waste hauling bid and award.
That you, Alex?
That's, uh, Jeremy and Jonathan.
So, this, um, from my understanding, they just, um, they just were awarded the bid, right, for the, um, waste hauling?
Well, we can't award it till the council does, but they won the lowest.
They won the lowest.
Then that's why we're, that's why we're going.
That's why they have to vote on it, so that they can begin tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
And they are prepared to do that, correct, Mr. Jeremy?
John. Yeah.
So, okay.
Reed, you good? Yeah.
So, nothing to really changes if this goes through? I mean, we're rocking on like we always had between you guys?
Change in color for up.
Yeah, people was going, now they're gonna do it.
I hate that perception. Sounds good to me.
Okay, alright, since there's no, um, no more questions about that. Number nine, discussion that is necessary regarding capital purchases. I know this is, Alex has some.
Yes, I have this. So, at, at the request of someone in the council, I was asked to provide quotes for the animal shelter duck work. The quote we were originally provided was just the guest, um, based off a conversation, nobody had actually gone to the animal shelter. That quote was fifteen thousand, it was placed on the capital list, which is under the assumption we had a legit quote.
Okay, but we're, um, but we did get some actual quotes, right?
Um, we got two actual quotes, well, actually, we got three. Um, one is for twenty-nine thousand, eight oh four, and that includes a new compressor unit, which, speaking with Reed, that is not required. Um, there's nothing wrong with the equipment that's out there right now.
Okay, and I know your friend said before I asked, and when could that be completed? Make sure you add the dates of completion.
Yes, ma'am, sleeping, I'm sorry, this vendor could begin on Monday.
Okay.
One second, this will present.
Okay.
The other quote that came in was twenty-five thousand, two eighty, and they could have it done by the end of May.
Okay, so, um.
One that includes the pump though.
You can take that off. Subtract the compressor from that quote? Yes. Is that my item listed or is it just? Yes, it's listed. So, what's the compressor? One quote would be twenty-five, two eighty, the other quote would be twenty thousand, one fifteen. Then that twenty thousand could start on Monday? Yes. So, the low quote could start on Monday? And the low quote is twenty thousand? Twenty thousand, one fifteen. Because it's minus the compressor.
And then you said a third one?
The third we don't wanna use because that includes the compressor. We don't need it.
But that, so they won't subtract the compressor?
No, we already done that. The same company gave us two different quotes, one with a compressor, one without.
Okay.
Both companies don't need to move any of the animals with maybe just a kennel going two or three feet over so they can do what they need to do.
Okay, Laura asks, um, I don't have mine, it may be on our, um, our tablets, um, is there a list of all the capital items that we prioritize? You have a list with you?
I do not have it with me. Um, the duck work is number two.
Okay, the duck work's number two, and I know awesome, number three is what we're gonna work on next. That's the, um, the computers and the program. So, we do, since as we, um, as we replenish that capital fund, we do wanna go ahead and start checking things off this list since we have the money in there.
Absolutely.
We don't want this list to just go and, yeah.
That's right.
So, so that's the goal. So, I'm excited about this. I mean, we're about to check something off this capital list and we're about to start working on, on the next thing.
And, and you said that they would start, if approved tonight, they would start?
Monday, all I gotta do is call.
I'm all fired up.
They're on the agenda to be voted, but I didn't put the amount, I didn't know which y'all wanted.
Right, don't forget, don't forget about the roof.
We're not, that's what I was saying, yeah. So, the museum roof was number one, the duck work number two, and the computers. For, um, everybody was number.
And thi- and this is on the agenda tonight, correct?
So, this is exciting, yeah, this is really exciting.
On the agenda, we'll have to amend it and add the amounts.
Okay.
Okay, alright, thank you, Alex. Alright, so number ten, um, discussion that is necessary by human resource.
I'm sorry, we're not doing.
Oh, I'm sorry, back to number nine.
Number nine, capital for computers. Sorry, Jane. Cause you just said.
I did, I was excited. I got excited about that duck work, I don't know why.
Alright, the city has, um, started last year with replacing computers. Last year, we were able to do nine in one laptop under this council. Um, we still have three two thousand and fifteen desktops out there. Um, one is actually in the police department, I don't know where to teach, okay, one's actually in the police department. And instead of purchasing a desktop for that person, we would like to do a, what's it called, you call?
All-in-one? All-in-one.
All-in-one, a docking station, so that they.
A laptop.
A laptop with a docking station, so that they can take it home instead of buying laptops and desktops for people that work from home regularly.
And you already have them listed?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, the clerks got one two thousand and fifteen, and our I T. people, they also have a two thousand and fifteen that they remote in to our site. Currently.
They're computer.
Yes, currently it's Rico, but it's a two thousand and fifteen, which is fine because the overall plan would be to replace some of the ones you purchased, we purchased last year. We do. Yes, because it's to get onto our network. We have several on our list. The overall plan is to get laptops with desktops eventually for those people that religiously work from home. Police chief, police captain, he has, I think, nine, but he understands we can't do them all at once. Um, E N L, the mayor said one, and that would be for the administrative assistants. Three minimum for the court, because they have to have laptops when they come in here. So, what they would like to do is take the three brand-new that they got less than a year ago and redistribute them, but that way they could have their docking station and everything would be set up.
So.
We just.
So, we would mark three others off the list?
Right, the problem we're having, especially with the court, is when they come in here, they're having trouble with their connectivity and everything else because they're going from one machine to another. So, that's what their request was. Um, the animal shelter, one, which you're aware of, we would just rather purchase her adopting with a laptop, and then she could take it home, and that would actually save the city money.
But also, um, she would, they were being up to their desktops.
Yes, yes. We would not give her a twenty twenty-three, but she would get one of the, you know, not old, old ones, yeah, redistributed one. And then for her accounting and finance, because we are religiously, and I believe everybody's aware of that, working from home and on the weekends. Um, and we got two last year for any ones, and we would take those two and redistribute them out.
Okay.
Desktops? Yes, sir, to people that don't work from home. So, net, was, was the amount of net, if we redistribute the three court and the two from E N L's? Was the net due that need replaced now?
Okay.
So, that's, I guess we can just subtract five from that.
So that's, I guess we can just subtract five from that amount?
I'm sorry, I have so many courts here, I just wanted to make sure. We have four different courts. So each one would end up being twenty-eight hundred dollars.
So Alex, and I know you and I talked about this, so we're, how close are we? Because this is gonna have to be simplified a little bit more, in order for us to get it and consider, because of course, we can't, we can't do them all. So how, how close are you organizing the rotation, on how this would be implemented, as well as the price on how many we need to, you are asking for us to do this year, versus in two years, or so on and so forth? Because the goal would, to be, get this on a rotation, to where we're not having all these old computers in five years, and then we're having to buy them for.
Right, um, we would like to actually just do ten this year, because of budget constraints and capital constraints, and then revisit it next year.
So do you have the price for the ten?
The ten's gonna be thirty thousand in capital.
Okay, and how much do we have in capital?
In capital. You have. You actually have two different capitals. Alright, in capital, after the museum, you have fifty-one thousand five forty-four left.
Okay. For this fiscal year?
For this fiscal year, because you started with two hundred and fifty thousand. You also have a hundred and two thousand in earmarked capital, that is available as well.
Keep it a vote.
So, let's, I know you probably have already done this, I know you went through all the departments, and you know where each new computer's gonna go, and you know where each, um, recycled computer's gonna go, and you probably know which ones are gonna be recycled out if we buy the ten, right?
Yes, we're actually going to discuss that on Thursday, we're not asking for the computers to be voted on tonight.
So, but you have fifty-one five forty-four, then you minus the twenty thousand, and you're going for it.
That's correct.
You said the total cost was thirty thousand dollars?
That's just.
That's a lot of money.
Can we, can we, oh, did you, how many people did you get the price from?
We got, well, no, we got, um, two different quotes from Ameritech and two different quotes from Rico.
Okay.
Can you find another, I mean, thirty thousand dollars, a lot of money spent on computers.
For ten computers, yes.
Don't you agree?
No.
You don't agree that that's a lot of money for ten computers?
I don't.
Ashton?
It's thirty, it's the thirty, um, it's the thirty, it may not be the cheapest quote, but it is the best quote, so what are we getting with the thirty, because we're not just getting computers?
No, you're getting the docking stations.
Okay.
What exactly all, does that entail for the docking stations?
Instead of the people working from home having a desktop and a laptop?
I'm gonna ask Nicole, Assistant Clarifying, she's the techie person, can you stand up?
Uh, the docking station would be at your desk at work, and basically, you would take your laptop, plug it in, and then it would act like a desktop. It would be your computer, but you would still have the monitors. Then when you get ready to go home, you unplug your laptop, and all of your stuff is still there, instead of having a desktop or a computer and then a laptop.
And then you just plug that up and start where you were?
Right, and essentially, instead of buying the people that need laptops, a laptop and a desktop, you would just be getting them a laptop.
I get you need it, I just think it's a lot of money.
Yeah, so Alex, let's do this, let's, um, let's just see it, let's just put it all in front of us on paper, and then, um, also show us who's in need. I think once we see who's in need.
How about by department instead of names, because we don't normally do any of that by name.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I mean, so by department.
I just wanted to make sure.
Well, and you also gotta look at, after the, after the duck work is subtracted, the item number two, that only leaves thirty-one, that's what's changed in that capital, so.
So, so let's just, um, let's just see it on paper with the, um, the quotes that you got, along with, um, which department, and also, could you add the model numbers in there for? Please, of the computers?
I'll provide you a picture.
Okay.
Do we have multiple quotes too, or just, is it just one?
No, I said we have four different quotes, two from Ameritech, and two from Rico.
And she's gonna provide us with all the information?
Ameritech is going to get rid of any and all more books for this purchase.
So we'll get more quotes, let me ask you, ask them, see if they can give you the model number on them, just see if they can give you the model number on them. It's, don't.
Okay.
That's a great question.
Just, please. We, we, we won't know on this.
I'm giving them the model.
But we.
I'm willing to say.
But, but when you see it, you, we can always say, no, but once we see it and we see the need, like you said, there's a computer in the police department right now that's, uh, two thousand and fifteen. So, you're, it's probably gonna cost you more if you go to buying a computer here and there in each department, maybe we got a better skill in both.
Yeah.
But once this is the model number, we can look at it and say, extra cost for one.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, it may have to be fixed in October, and watch that capital money, you know, a little more.
Well, anything with the, the twenty-eight hundred part is like two, because you're, you're getting two.
Yeah.
So, if you're talking about a thousand, a thousand fifteen hundred on desktop, what's it, eight hundred, a thousand dollars?
So, yeah, so are you ready for, um, number ten, are you still writing something, Alex? Alex?
No, I'm good.
Okay, alright, so let's go on to number ten. Excuse me, discussion that's necessary by human resource, Jane McGee, to update human resource job descriptions. So, before we start, and Jane, we're gonna ask, um, I think we do have some questions, but before we start, let's just start from the, um, the right all the way to the left with the questions, so we can just, um, make sure we get our questions out one at a time.
There you go.
If that's okay, and Laura, that means you'll be first.
We'll let her talk first, and then I'll start asking.
Well, first of all, I just wanna say, I really appreciate this opportunity to talk about this job description, and I thank you for the time, and you made that, you had some sense of urgency about it. Questions?
Mark, Laura, you're up first.
Um, with, what, what are we looking, are we looking at you move her as a department head? I have, what's our plan of action with their job description? Like, what, what are we going to go through, mayor's recommendations, that's where I need to come up, in which way we're planning?
So are, are you asking if?
Are we putting her, in her, like, are we putting her under the clerk's office? Is that what, I mean, I'm trying to figure out, because I know that they've mentioned.
This job description, so we're, we're asking the question about the job descriptions, so, I think the job description makes you, yeah, a department, um, makes her own department.
I'll be happy to answer it.
Like, I just, I don't know which way we're leaning, it's hard for me to.
It might be premature for that, but thank you.
So then you want us to come back to you, Laura?
Yeah, come back to me, because I'll leave you ready.
Well, I have the same question, I was confused by that, it looked like you were creating a department, rather than simply updating a description, so I was confused by that.
And I think that's the question that a lot of us have, the job description looked like it was created for a department versus for one person.
I'll be happy to address that. The original job description that was created back in two thousand fourteen was developed as a department head, okay? Dr. Buford wrote that, drafted two thousand eight, Robert Runzey, the civil service board, the whole intent was to bring that above board, have it as a separate department. That did not exactly take fruition, and after I was hired, um, Ms. Nora morphed in that position, she'd been done doing accounting, and she never had a human resource job description, that didn't come about until two thousand fourteen, when she decided to retire. So, we're just updating it as it should be. We have had her, the mayor's, very nice endorsement, indicated that we've had three HR consultants tell us this. It is, it is a department head's position, it always has been for the last nine years.
Okay, so we got, um, date updated.
Are you, are you done?
No, for now, I don't, I'm still confused.
Here's the thing, and I'm a little confused too. In, in my mind, Miss Jane, I thought we would just reformat, this looks like to me, like a brand-new job description, that's not been reformat. Reformat, I thought we were just changing some words, changing some letters maybe, but here, this looks like a whole new, different job.
This is the original job description, and a lot of the meat that's in the original job description is also, in this job description, the formatting is the design, that's the only thing that really changed in the title.
Okay, I thought that's.
Specialist is more of a secondary, ancillary position, like your number two person, the director is the function, the, the, the top person that oversees the day-to-day function of HR, human resources.
So, and, and that's where I'm a little confused, that we went from specialist to director, so in my mind, when you changed from specialist to director, that made it a brand-new job, so that's a brand-new job description.
No, it's just a name change, actually.
And you're saying just changing the title doesn't make it a new job description, correct?
We're just changing the title, it's basically the same job, it's gonna have the same responsibilities, the responsibilities will never change, very, very little change in an HR person's.
Okay, alright, so now, that, this is, you know, we're talking about department heads and whatnot, department heads have their own expenditures, so does that mean, if this goes through, HR's gonna have to have its own budget?
Down the road, we wouldn't do anything midstream, we are asking for a, a line item, which we had discussed with our, with our city clerk, this is nothing that has to be changed, we're just addressing the job description today. That's nothing that has to happen tomorrow.
Sure.
You could wait till the twenty twenty-five budget, it's not a problem.
I got you, and, and also in here, and, and don't, don't take me the wrong way, because I read, I had all day Sunday to read, so that's what it is.
You read, I'm happy, thanks to.
Um, this has got supervisory duties in it, and, and don't make me, and don't, I don't wanna sound rude, but who are you supervising?
Well, let me explain something, let's go back to, gosh, twenty twelve, when, uh, we had a city planner, his name was Tommy Runzey, and he was a standalone department head, making about sixty thousand a year. He didn't have any, anybody to supervise, you, you managed the function, and here's another thing, uh, this is also designed for future, not just today. This job, right now, I'm, I'm trying to get on the list for one full-time person, and after the discussion about parking reg, the library, those are gonna be additional responsibilities for your director, possibly. So, right now, it doesn't have to supervise anyone, and just to remind you, and some of you may not even know this, I was a human resource director for a Marriott franchise, that had over four hundred employees. I managed no one for the first two years, and then I finally did get a full-time assistant, it doesn't matter, that has kind of been a fallacy in this, you know, the communication with this thing, so, you know, that's coming later.
Okay, but that just confused me a little bit, because it was in the job description, and I know you really don't have anyone yet, under your supervision.
Not yet, not directly, uh, Cassie, as y'all know, thanks to Mr. Ashton helping me with that dotted line, she helps out a lot, the mayor and me, and we've been able to do a lot more with that dotted line than, than if I had just had no one.
Sure, okay, I, I've got a couple more, and I'm gonna be done, okay?
Sure.
As far as payroll, are, are you used to doing payroll, because I know, I, I've always been kind of confused on the clerk's office payroll, Miss Jane's office payroll, me the middle?
I would love to address that, that is indicated in the job description as payroll processes, which is the same exact verbiage as in the original two thousand fourteen job description. The payroll is a very unique question, we have UKG now that has multiple facets that we've not been able to even touch. Um, I will always have a role, that's something that the clerk, Cassie, me, the mayor, will work out moving forward. Right now, the department heads are responsible, now that we've implemented UKG as of November twenty twenty-three, they have to approve their own payroll. We're like a check and balance right now, so, that hasn't changed, payroll will still be a shared responsibility for now with both departments.
I, 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 I don't understand that part, because I always thought all payroll come to you, you checked and approved and it's city.
That was when it was manual.
So.
Remember, it took three days to, to do that manual process, and the mayor, thank your wonderful soul, helped out with, with, with allowing us to go forward with UKG, and you guys did as well, so that we've, we're saving some time with UKG.
But it says that I have proper submission of the human resource office's payroll.
That would be my payroll, and later on, hopefully, an additional full-time person, that would be my departmental payroll, that's, that's that part.
Well, since you mentioned UKG, regarding the fire department pay, okay, has, I know there's been some issues with that, has it been fixed in UKG?
Can we go on with the job description and get to that later? We are already working on that, we've had some problems with UKG because of the Alabama tax that changed, changed January first, it was working fine, and that kind of kicked it out, so we are dealing with the highest level of UKG.
Who's checking payroll now? Who is, department heads are checking their own payroll and approving?
They are checking their own payroll, approving it, we're actually doing manual, uh, fire payroll right now, we're almost, think we're getting real close to getting the issues resolved, and like I said, we've got the attention of some high-level UKG people.
Okay, can I answer my next question? So we are asking department heads to, to do all payroll duties?
Yes.
Because that's, that's been removed out of here?
Yes.
Okay, and it's, one more, it talks about the pay plan?
Yeah.
In the job description?
Yes.
Okay, and, and I'm not being obvious, so don't take me the wrong way, Cassie done the majority of the pay plan, under your supervision maybe?
Uh, absolutely, and I'd like to touch on that, because I'm glad you bring that up.
Okay.
Um, as, as you recall, we went through several HR consultants, and we couldn't find us a pay plan that was satisfactory for the council. Cassie came to me and said, why don't we do our own pay plan? I said, I'm on board, I'll try anything, because we need to fix it, this thing's, you know, fifteen years old. So, I introduced Cassie to Onette, we worked together collaborative, the reason we chose Cassie is because of her very unique skills, definitely in relations to Excel spreadsheets and those kind of things, that's not my skill set. So, in that regard, yes, she did, along the way, we worked together and collaborated, I am the HR specialist, she respects that, and we worked together, and I don't mind giving her a lot of credit, but this was a joint collaboration.
Sure, but in, in, in her job description, there's not any thing to do with pay plans, and yours is, is outlined, and you're, so that's why I was a little.
Well, that's a good point, that probably needs to be addressed when we look at hers and update it, because this was like a midstream, we didn't know you guys were gonna go with that plan, we didn't know you were gonna give it consideration, and we thank the Lord that you did.
One more thing, and I'm gonna be done. So I was modifying city policies and procedures and coming up with things, I know we've called Alexandra Hyde on a lot of things, but the, the policies and procedures and evaluating things falls in this job description, just like everything else I have listed. So why are we calling Alexandra Hyde, and you have the expertise, because it fits your job description?
I'm thrilled you asked that. Any company, or state, federal government, you need an employment attorney, always, I'm not an attorney.
Sure.
And I am too old to go to law school, so that's not gonna happen, but, you wanna, I wanna make sure that you have everything tied up in a nice bow, there's no liability, and that, and we don't call her that frequently, but we, we know when to call her, that's my expertise, I know when I need to make that call. And I go right to him and say, Mayor, here's the situation, you good with it? And that's, that's that, you're always gonna have an employment attorney. Or you're crazy if you don't.
Let you know.
Yeah, I, I still think there's some growth there, yeah, thank you, Miss Jenny.
Any, anytime you think of something else, call me.
Yes.
I'll tell you.
Alright, Ashton's up next.
Alright, on the job summary, human resource director performed and managed all department employees, um, it says there's duties and responsibilities related to human resource activities, so like recruiting staff and training, all that, how does that fall under HR's umbrella? I mean, are you helping them recruit, train, and retain, or is that?
Yeah, absolutely, I run all the, run all the job ads, I, I get the mayor's signature on the letter to approve the, uh, request for posting, uh, post on the chamber website, um, uh, post jobs internally, externally, uh, anybody that walks in, we try to get them, you know, interested in something, we have a lot of people, in fact, we had a couple of people this week, what y'all got? You know, we're salespeople, so to speak. So, you know, I'd like to do a lot more. So, you know, I'd like to do a lot more, I'd like to have some free time to go to job fairs and, and really sell, sell us, but right now I can't do that because of time constraints, but maybe down the road.
So on the prereqs, education experience, this is minimal, neither of the two. So, uh, bachelor's degree or six years' experience, you can be HR director, is that how I read that?
Well, that's how we wrote it up, um, that degree, we gave, we gave it some, some, um, you know, so it's really an equivalent of ten years.
But somebody that doesn't have an HR degree but has six years' experience in HR capacity can come in and.
They can come in, if they have no college, they have to have ten years. Hands down, you can't just walk in the job.
All right. Field experience, um, related, human resources related, and then, uh, that would be in a supervisor executive capacity. That, just taking you for example, if you were to come in and apply now, you, that fifty percent would go back to your Marriott day when you were over August week.
Oh, yeah, I, I've managed over sixty people, I have a lot of, uh, I have multi-unit, uh, management experience, I have, you know, standalone hotels. Um, like I said, I've been a HR director for a hotel company for four hundred employees.
And then lastly, on the financial management of mid-states, um, authorization of expenditures will rest upon human resource director. Um, is that authorizing stuff? If your inferior employee comes in and asks for something, you're authorizing, what, what does that authorizing expenditures entail?
Uh, show me which, let me just take a glance at it, what type, what a heading or whatever.
Duties, tasks, and responsibilities, and then the fourth bullet, the third bullet, it's financial management.
Well, this is on the behalf of the HR, assuming there's another person involved, but also, um, there is a budgeting piece that HR should be helping with the, with the, some of the departmental staffing. Ideally, it should come through the mayor.
And I get the budgeting piece up at the beginning, but the last sentence, the authorization expenditures will rest upon human resource director, what, what does that entail?
That, that's just talking about the budget, like, let's say if we check, if we split this up today. The personnel, um, part of the E and L budget is huge, that's all your ads, you know, um, and that's expensive, your, your physicals, your SOC evaluations, um, that's all those things, your, your drug test, now we've saved a lot of money on the drug test, we do them in-house, so.
What you're saying.
Those are the expenses, that, that, that would move over eventually to the HR's budget, and I would be accountable for the bottom line, yes.
Got you.
And I have done budgets for twenty, thirty years almost, so that's not a problem.
I'm sorry.
I think Laura, did you have some more feedback? I think she covered everything, but, uh, Lee.
I'm worried, I don't think this is what we asked for, we've been asking for a job description for a human resource specialist for about seven years, just now been able to get a job description, which is, which is a job description that is much bigger than that and has speculative functions that have not been granted to that position, because we have not posted the position to do that, so I don't, I don't accept this one as being, as being.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do agree with Lee, I think this is, um, I think this was a lot more, to me this looks like for an entire department versus just one person.
Would you need it reformat?
Well, that's what it is.
Yeah.
You're right.
But we asked for a job, just for your personal job description, and that's what we were expecting.
That's what I'm doing, that's the job I'm doing.
There are several things you pointed to as being expected to, that are in that, that are also not even being done, so this is not even close.
Do you have any questions, Laura, Lee, Anna, and that?
No, it's, it's not, it's just not, it's not what we're looking for.
Well, if it became a different, I mean, this, I've got a one question, I do, so if it became a separate department, would it have to be retested? Or is that position technically changing to from specialist to director?
I don't think so, but that's a good question, that would, I would have to talk to Mr. Runzey about that, I don't think so due to the history of this situation in this job, I doubt it.
So, since this isn't what we asked for, what do we think the next, um, course of action should be? Because I think we're, the majority agrees that we're not gonna accept this job description.
I've just heard from two of you.
Yeah, there's, there's still a lot of gray.
Yeah.
There's still a lot of gray area here for that.
Okay.
With my question.
Okay. So, um.
Do we need to?
We just looked at the old job description and reformatted it, that's all.
Yeah, just reformat.
Same functionality, the same duties, the same responsibilities, with the finessing of the words that they done in the other job description.
So should we just ask Kathy to help us with it, since we asked, since she's.
It's technically not in Kathy's job description.
That's why it's not.
That is, it's been held, you're right.
But how does it work with Kathy, are you allowed to direct Kathy? Because I know that she's.
Kathy and I work together.
Okay.
I'm not the boss.
Fifty, fifty percent rule.
Okay.
So, so what, so what is the plan?
Can we ask Kathy to reformat the old job description, is she still with us?
Mayor, that's what, that's what we're requesting, and, um.
I know what you requested, but going by the, the past experience back to, uh, two thousand and fourteen, what was recommended on the job description for HR should be individual, I don't know where, your father's HR, does he come under any individual? No, they, they're separate, because the material they have to handle, the, the personnel, the, the private, uh, information on individuals they have to handle, or have, even through grievances and other things. And she's here at six o'clock, seven o'clock in the morning interviewing these job descriptions, you know, not job description, but jobs for our personnel. There's stuff I don't want to deal with, somebody asked me, said, do you know what your HR person does? I said, no, because I'm not an HR person, I don't wanna know. Do they deal with sensitive information?
Wait, just need to get.
But he is, he has his own department, as I mentioned.
But you go anywhere and find an HR person, they're their own department.
She, she is, she reports to the mayor.
With all due respect, Mayor, you know, and I hear what you're saying, I do understand. I don't, I don't think this is what we asked for, and we're not gonna accept. We're not gonna accept it, so we're gonna ask that the old job description be reformatted and be resubmitted into the council.
Okay.
If that's a fair request.
You got it.
Thank you, Mayor.
The script says, don't make them separate.
All right, so are we ready to, um, move on?
When do you, when, when do you expect the night to be done, ma'am?
Can we get that, Mayor?
At the next meeting?
Please.
First meeting, night?
Yes.
The first meeting at night?
All right, do we wanna, um.
First meeting, anybody?
All right. All right, so these are the things that are gonna be, um, considered tonight that we are gonna actually vote on. Number, um, hold on, what is it? Number twelve is, um, coming off, and the only reason it's coming off is because we asked that, we told everybody, we wanna be consistent, we told everybody that we were only gonna vote on things that didn't ask for additional funding before, um, two thousand and twenty-three. So, the board education, that's why it was put back on the list with the dollar amount, it was subtracted from what we had, so that will be included on the things that we vote on for, um, the next meeting. And we've already decided what we're actually gonna vote on, that makes sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, first thing is, we're gonna, um, authorize the mayor to enter a waste hauling contract with Green Lodge, we talked about that, um, we're gonna, oh, action that is necessary to approve the resolution for the, um, chamber commerce contract. This is, um, one of the people that did not ask for additional funding, action, um, necessary to approve the, um, Talladega County Health Department's contract. Um, action that's necessary to approve the additional twenty-five thousand to the Lake Howard Authority. Action that's necessary to approve additional five hundred dollars to the Beautification Council, and these are all level funded. So I know I keep saying approve and additional, this is the level funded that they asked for from the total of the twenty-four budget. So it's the same thing they got in twenty-three, this is an additional one. Number seven, um, action that is necessary to approve, um, capital purchase for the animal shelter, um, duck work.
So we're not, you said five to seven, so we're not voting on it three nineteen tonight for four days, can't you?
No, and that's, that's what we said, to be consistent, and Tom, and that's why we added everything to the list, the list we did tonight with the total amounts, it was added in the list, that's everything that we're going to vote on for next time, because now we're all on the same page.
But if we know we're gonna do it, why can't we just do it?
Because.
It's not consistent.
I would like for us to be consistent, we, we made everybody else wait, we told everybody else that we weren't gonna vote on anything else that asked for additional funding, and that was additional funding, I know they were saying it's not additional funding, they were asking to be level funded, but the level funding was back from, two, yeah, two thousand and eight, yeah.
Isaac Junior.
Yeah, but the thing is, like I said, we're all on the same page, right? We got our list of what we're in agreement on, and those are the things that are going on our, um, next meeting.
I was explaining to them that even if we were to vote on it tonight.
Yeah.
We're not gonna write the check till next week, and this has been coordinated with Mr. Osborne.
Yeah.
Correct?
And I talked to Dr. Ellis, well.
And that will be a, a separate item, so I could rechange myself?
Yeah, everything, everything is gonna be, um, separate, individually, yeah, individual, every individual, um, line item. With amounts, that's it?
Good job.
And where it's coming from.
Yeah.
So strike, strike six and twelve.
Yeah. That makes sense, that?
Yes.
All right, forgot where I was. Number seven, action that is necessary to approve capital purchase for animal shelter, um, duck work, and it is great. And don't let me forget to amend the agenda, so we can add the, um, the amount. Number eight, action that is necessary to approve additional funds to advertise and hire business license clerk until August ninth. This would, um, allow the current business license clerk to train the new business license clerk, funding would come from unused salaries, and we talked about this at our last work session, if you guys remember. All right, number nine, action that is necessary to approve the retirement of Kena Officer Drago. And then number ten, action that is necessary for the city of Sulikaga to buy out the, um, contract of certified police officer Malcolm Kelly in the amount of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Number eleven, action that is necessary to approve fiscal year accounts payable invoices. Number twelve, action that is necessary to approve March twenty-four payroll in the amount of seven hundred forty-six thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars, sixty-seven cents. And number thirteen, see attorney Edward B. Livingston, Jr., to address council involving matters of trade or commerce in which this body is in competition with private individuals or entities, other Alabama governmental bodies, or other states of foreign nations. And that will be, will that be at the beginning or at the end?
Can we do our, can we call everybody up that wants to come talk again in the meeting first, then go into executive session?
We can, so that.
To return.
Sounds good. Is that cool with everybody else? All right, so do we need to, um, we're gonna let everybody take a break, I know we've been in here for a while, so we'll do like a little five percent, um, bathroom break, and we'll.
Thank you, Jesus.
We'll start at six ten.